Welcome to the Fairfax Planning Commission, July 18, 2024. Can I get a roll call?
Yes. Newton?
Here.
Swift?
Here.
Kelly? Petrone? Bela?
Present.
Pfeffer?
Here.
Chair Jansen?
Here.
All are present.
So as you can see tonight, we have a full commission, thanks to Commissioner Petron, who joins us tonight. Welcome. Are there any additional items we need to add to the agenda? Otherwise, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
I'll second. Okay, Newton?
Aye.
Swift?
Aye.
Kelly? Petrone?
Aye.
Bela?
Aye.
Pfeffer?
Aye.
Chair Jansen?
Aye. Meeting protocol, I'll read that to you. The chair will maintain order at all meetings in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, and the Planning Commission has the responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to encourage community participation and citizen input at the Planning Commission meetings. The Planning Commission and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motive of the Planning Commission members, staff members, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. All interested persons are invited to participate in public hearings, and in order to give all interested an opportunity to be heard and to ensure the presentation of all points of view, members of this audience should: one, limit their presentations to three minutes; provide comments by email; state their view and, oh, I should say, two, three, state their view and concerns succinctly; and four, submit any new documents to the planning staff first directly or by email, so it can be entered in the record. With that, we will open the floor for public comments on non-agenda items. Do we have anybody in the audience who wants to speak? Non-seeing, do we have anybody on Zoom?
I see no hands raised.
Non-seeing, did we get any emails for items on the agenda to be added? I believe not. Nope. Okay, we'll close the public comment period, and we will go to the next item on the agenda. There are currently no items on the consent calendar, so we'll move into Agenda Item Number One, 152 Domingo Avenue. Can we get a staff report, please?
Yes. So this project was continued from the June 20, 2024, Commission meeting, where the Planning Commission directed the applicants to reduce the square footage of the addition so that the project would no longer require an exception to the .40 floor area ratio limitation, and so that it maintains an FAR of .40. The applicant's architect has redesigned the project, and it now encompasses the addition of a 341-square-foot, two-bedroom, one-bathroom, second-story addition onto the 1,159-square-foot, two-bedroom, one-and-a-half-bath, one-story, single-family residence, converting it to a 1,500-square-foot, three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, single-family residence. The project includes relocating the front entry porch from the northeast corner to the southeast corner of the front of the building to widen the driveway to 20 feet and provide an additional parking space out of the minimum required five-foot setback and the combined 15-foot side yard setbacks, and bringing the property into compliance with parking regulations. Project also includes reducing the height of the approximately eight-foot-tall front fence to the permitted four feet in height. Project requires the approval of a conditional use permit and a design review permit, because it does constitute a 50% remodel. It no longer requires the approval of a floor area ratio exception, and it does require, oh, that's it, it doesn't need a tree removal permit. So the revised plans result in a residence that's similar in size and maintains the same .40.
Okay, looks like everything is working. We will continue the meeting where we left off. Question was if there are any questions for staff from the Commission, and we could not see Commissioner Newton, so go ahead.
Hi. Sorry, my computer is talking to me. I'm sorry, because you guys cut off very early in the description here of the, from the staff report. So Linda, my one and only-
Want me to recap?
Well, you might want to do it for the, for the recording, because you guys, you left in mid-
I'll try to make it more brief.
Description.
Okay, so-
Let me tell you what my question is, and maybe you already answered it. The table with the FAR numbers appears to be the same one from the prior?
Yes, I forgot to change the .44 to .40.
Is that the only change?
Yes.
Okay.
They removed, they removed the bonus room from the second floor, which decreased the square footage of the overall house so that it now complies with the standard of .40, which is permitted.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Oh, that turns it on. It's been on the whole time. I apologize. Just want to make a clarification or clarify an issue. I don't think there's any code or legal restriction on a building that will shade a neighbor's-
That's right.
PV panels.
That's right.
Okay.
Yep. Not yet, anyway.
Seeing no other, we'll proceed. Does the applicant want to talk? Is the applicant in the room?
They advised me that they just, they're there for answering questions if you have any, but they don't really have anything to add.
Okay, sounds good. Then we will open it for public comments. Are there, is there anybody in the room who'd like to comment on this item? Do we have, seeing none, do we have anybody on Zoom?
I'm just going to take a beat and remind the people, because we had such a long technical error, that now is the time to comment on this item, and you can use the raise hand icon on Zoom. And I see no hands raised. Thank you, Chair.
I'll give them a few seconds to find the button. Seeing, hearing none, we'll bring it back to the Commission. Does any of the Commissioners would like to make comments, observations? Does any of the Commissioners would like to make a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution Number 202409. A resolution of the Fairfax Planning Commission approving application number 2406, a conditional use permit and a design review permit for a remodel and expansion of an existing 1,159-square-foot, two-bedroom, one-and-a-half-bathroom, one-story residence, adding 341 square feet resulting in a 1,500-square-foot, three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bathroom residence at 152 Domingo Avenue.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can I get a roll call?
Newton? Swift?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Petrone?
Aye.
Bela?
Aye.
Pfeffer?
Aye.
Chair Jansen?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. There's a 10-day appeals period, which can be applied to at the town's clerk. With that, we will move on to Agenda Item Number Two. And 85 Wood Lane, can I get a staff report, please?
Yep. So this project encompasses relocating and rebuilding the one-car garage one foot further south of the front property line than the existing garage, a 204-square-foot living room expansion connecting the existing house to the relocated garage, and a 182-square-foot, two-story addition at the rear southeast corner of the house. The first floor of the two-story addition includes a combination laundry room with a utility sink and toilet on the first story, and a storage loft with six-foot ceilings on the second floor accessed via an interior stairway from the laundry room. The 182-square-foot, two-story rear addition reaches approximately 19 feet above grade at the peak of its roof, and the living room addition reaches 15 feet in height above grade. The project increases the house from 852 square feet to 1,238 square feet, not including the 300-square-foot garage. So the project requires the approval of a conditional use permit and a combined side yard setback variance and a tree removal permit. The project will not result in a residence or a floor, with a floor area ratio for the property that's out of character with the surrounding neighborhood. The proposed project will not change the existing side yard setbacks maintained by the main house and the existing garage. Both the newly relocated and reconstructed garage and the two-story rear addition at the rear of the existing house will maintain the, will either maintain or exceed the required minimum five-foot side yard setback, but will not maintain the required 20-foot combined side yard setback and require the approval of a combined side yard setback variance. The conditional use permit is required because the 22,350-square-foot, 50-foot-wide site is legal non-conforming. I know that sounds large by Fairfax standards for the size, but because the slope of the property is 49% at the rear, the average slope is 49%. So in order to be conforming, the site would have to be 41,000 square feet in area and 167 feet wide to be deemed conforming. And the town code goes on to require that a conditional use permit is required from the Planning Commission prior to any use, occupancy, or physical improvement of or on a building site failing to meet the minimum area and with requirements. Therefore, this project, even though it's minor, does require the approval of a conditional use permit. The project as proposed allows the garage to retain its existing footprint with only a small relocation one foot further to the south in order to allow parking within the driveway to comply with the minimum 9 by 19-foot parking space requirements. So there's two spaces provided in the garage now, and, I mean, two spaces in the driveway and one in the garage. Many of the residential improvements on Wood Lane were constructed prior to 1973, when the combined setback regulations were put into place by the adoption of Ordinance 352, and they do not comply with the required combined side yard setbacks. Therefore, the approval of this conditional use permit will not result in any new construction projecting any further into the required setback or create a development that's out of character with the neighborhood. The garage relocation and reconstruction and the widening of the driveway will bring the parking into compliance with the minimum requirements for the single-family home, and the ADU at the rear of the property predates any parking requirements or anything. So that doesn't really enter into the equation. So the property will conform with the parking regulations after this relocation of the garage and the widening of the driveway. Due to most of the rear of the site having the steep slope of 49% and being only 50 foot wide, if, if we required the project to be redesigned, to relocate the garage out of the setback, out of the combined setbacks, or to relocate the second story, or to somehow reconfigure the square footage, it would, it would end up being located in the very small level patio at the rear of the house, leaving no usable outdoor living space on the property unless they start grading the hillside and building walls. So I'm going to try to explain what happened with the tree removal permit, because what the code says is, so when we, when we decided to try to give the Planning Commission authority over tree removal permits for projects that were requiring the removal of the trees, it was just supposed to go to you guys, and you were supposed to have authority. But when it got up to the council, they, for some reason, included this language that, that said that the project shall be sent to the Tree Committee for a recommendation to the Planning Commission before the project gets to the Planning Commission. In a perfect world, that works fine and doesn't delay everyone's processing. I think it's only happened one other time, and I couldn't remember the address that it happened for, but it was part, it was after we'd already done our 30-day initial review that we ended up getting information and then discovering that some trees were going to have to come out because of their proximity or because of their health, and we ended up bringing it straight to you, and because of the, I don't want to use the word insignificant, but because the trees weren't heritage trees, and they were small, and, you know, they were already damaged, or they were going to cause fire hazards, you were willing to take action without a recommendation from the Tree Committee. And that's what we're hoping you're willing to do here, because we got the tree protection plan from the arborist, and in it, he identified a Japanese maple and a apple tree that are relatively small, and they're located between the existing house and the ADU. And the Japanese maple is diseased and needs to come out, and the apple tree is leaning, and he's recommending that it be relocated. So they're not heritage trees protected by the tree ordinance, and the arborist is recommending that the one be removed and they be relocated. So we're recommending that you approve the tree removal permit without a recommendation from the Tree Committee, because Renew turned in the tree removal permit, but that, their meeting is not until next week. And if they went next week, that would put them off till the August Planning Commission meeting. And it's just a recommendation from the Tree Committee, so. So anyway, we're able to recommend findings for the conditional use permit and for the approval of the setback variances and for the approval of the tree removal permit. And we're recommending that you conduct the public hearing and then move to approve application 2408 by adopting the attached Resolution 2024-11, containing the required findings and conditions for the project approval. And that would-
Thank you. Any of the Commissioners have questions for staff? Commissioner Swift?
So just clarification with the staff report. It kind of reads like the Tree Committee didn't do what they needed to do within the required 30-day period, but they actually haven't had 30 days. And the 30 days would have taken them, I think, to cover their meeting that they have scheduled. So I just wanted to clarify that, and that's fine. It's just a, a process that I think we have in place, and other than, like you said, one other time or tonight, that we want to honor that. The other point or question for your staff report is you mentioned that on those two trees, the apple tree was to be relocated, the Japanese maple was to be removed, but also replaced with another tree.
That's the recommendation, yeah, that's the recommendation of the arborist, and I, I, I included it in the, in the resolution. And the thing about the ordinance about the Tree Committee, it says they're supposed to do their review in the same manner as the, as the other agencies, right? That happens if we're aware of it. It gets sent out right away. An application comes in, we send it out. They have 30 days from the submittal to review it.
I understand, and a lot of times we have just the opposite, where an application will go to the Tree Committee, let's say, five months before we actually have the project come before us. And that's kind, it's more the case where it's a longer period of time before than a situation like that, like this. That's right.
Any other questions? Seeing none, does the applicant would like to speak? Please go to the mic. And you'd need to press the button, so it goes, turns on. Yep.
Hi there. I'm Renou Malhotra. I'm the property owner. And I was hoping to save the trees. It's, so that's why it got delayed. I actually really liked that maple tree, but it is also not well, so. And it's on the agenda for next week, so if it really matters, you could have it, wait for that decision, but I didn't want to run into another month or two delay before we could start. Right, thank you.
Any questions from the Commission for the applicant? No, thank you. Do we have anybody in the public who'd like to speak to this item? Seeing none in the room? Do we have somebody on Zoom?
I see no hands, Chair. Oh, I'm sorry. The architect has decided. Go ahead, Mr. Williamson, you should be able to speak. I'm, unmute yourself first.
Hi, Chair Jansen and Commissioners. I'm here just to add, you know, any support. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them along with the, the owner. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else on Zoom?
I see no other hands online.
Okay, with that, we'll bring it back to the Commission. Does any of the Commissioners who would like to speak today? Commissioner Bella?
Just a minor thing I see on the resolution, the residence at 85 Wood Lanet. It says Wood Lanet instead of Wood Lane, just a minor-
What page is that on, John?
Oh, that's page, that would be page Attachment A, page one of the resolution.
Okay, thank you. I will find it.
Commissioner Swift?
I support this application. I think it's a great project. And I would be ready, if everyone else is, to propose a resolution. I would have some changes in it, but I think it's, it's a great application.
Any other comments?
Just a thought on the trees, you know, if they're not in good health, then it, it doesn't seem to make sense to use that, to hold it up, to get the review. If it's pretty clear they're not heritage trees, and they're both in poor health, as identified by the arborist, so it seems like we could move ahead with confidence with that, with the resolution.
Okay, can I have a, oh.
Chair.
Commissioner Newton, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, Commissioner Bella, about the trees. I think they are relocating the apple, and it was the Japanese maple that was in poor health. And so, and I also just, if there's a plan to remove it next week, move the apple and remove the, the Japanese maple, you know, if we adopt this resolution, as I think we're going to this evening, the Chair Jansen will tell you there's a 10-day appeal period, so, you know, you may want to give yourself a 10-day window. Thanks.
Trees are not being removed next week. It's on the agenda for the Tree Committee next week. Thanks.
Thank you for that clarification.
Any other comments? Can I have a motion? Commissioner Swift?
And I'll have corrections on this one, so I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2024-11. And this will be one of the corrections. Resolution of the Fairfax Planning Commission approving application number 24-08 for a conditional use permit, tree removal permit, and a combined side yard setback variance for a remodel and expansion of an existing single-family residence at 85 Wood Lane, and that's with the T removed from the word lane. Page three, the third paragraph, under tree removal permit, where we discuss removing the Japanese maple and replacing it with another tree. I would like to have that state that it's a verticulum-resistant species as per the arborist, and I didn't, probably didn't pronounce that right. Page three, the last paragraph, correct the project plan receive date from July 11th to June 24th, and change the arborist report date from July 19th to June 19th. And then page four, number 22, just capitalized dark sky. And that would be my motion.
One second.
Newton?
Aye.
Swift?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Petrone?
Aye.
Bela?
Aye.
Pfeffer?
Aye.
Chair Jansen?
Aye.
Motion passes. There's a 10-day appeal period, can be applied to at the town clerk. And with that, we will move to Agenda Item Number Three.
And can I just ask, staff's going to let the Tree Committee know that they have one less application next week?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Unless you'd like them to continue on obliviously to see what they do.
I presume Item Number Three will have some input from staff, planning director.
And this could be a really short item. This is just kind of a, just a check. I mean, I, we have a full commission here today, but we have, I think traditionally, always had seven members, third Thursday, 7:00 PM. And so this is just kind of, it's good to have an occasional opportunity just to check in, maybe after, I don't know how many years, 40 years maybe, that it, since it's been like that, and it's, it's fine if we leave it, but this would be an opportunity to potentially change things up if we wanted to have a different day or a different time, like some, some Commissions around the region have them earlier. Usually, it's not later than seven. Seven's probably the latest time that Commissions have, and it, it makes sense, because it gives people a chance to get there from after work. However, it does make the meetings later. So you, we could move up the time, we could change the day. There's also this question that the, that a lot of Commissions have five members versus seven. That would be a town council decision, but, and I don't know if this Commission has any strong, obviously, we wouldn't be kicking anybody off the Commission any, anytime soon, just in the future. If you think that would fit for Fairfax to go down to five versus seven, it'd be easier to recruit if it's fewer members, but then, you know, it's traditionally been seven. So this is just kind of an opportunity just to see if the Planning Commission has any thoughts or if any changes, or if we just want to leave things well enough alone.
I'll bring it to the Commission. I first want to respond to the last item, the size of the Commission. I think if we are truly seven, I think that is perfectly okay. And I think the issue we've had is if we can't meet quorum. So the, that's not so much dependent on the size, because seven, with five, you need two, with seven, you need three. So if it's bigger, it might be better, but we have this oddity in the current California regulation, where if you join remotely, you don't count to quorum. And that's a quirk that shouldn't have been there. I hope it disappears. So I think at this point, because we're now complete, we don't have to change that. However, if the state doesn't fix that problem, and we would have not the ability to be at seven again, we would need to revisit that item. So that's a double if. So currently, I mean, that would be my, because that has been the problem in the past, right? So, but currently, I think we're in good shape now, but that was just my thought on that. Regarding time and date, I'll, and this item, I'd like to hear from the other Commissioners what they think.
I'm fine with the seven. I think a Planning Commission of seven is better than a Planning Commission of five, because there is more input from the Commission. I think seven o'clock is fine, and as you said, our problem before was we weren't, because of absences, we weren't able to get quorums. And so hopefully, that's been taken care of. As far as the day of the month, Thursday's fine, and I think there was one point at time in the last three, four years where we changed it to maybe the fourth Thursday or something, because I think the council was having, I don't know, two meetings or something. But then we went back to-
On a, like a special occasion.
We went back to the third, no.
Oh, we actually moved it.
It actually was moved by the planning director to permanently be the fourth Thursday, because there were, because of the- It actually was moved by the planning director to permanently be the fourth Thursday because there were, because of the numerous meetings for the housing element update and the special meetings that were having to occur, there, the council, the council meetings and the planning commissions, just for a short period of time, were back to back. And it was felt that it was too hard on the, on the people that had to attend both meetings, so they
Okay, but.
Moved it to the fourth Thursday, but now it's.
The third.
As soon as.
Third or fourth, probably no difference really.
Got through a hard, really hard, busy part. It was, it was useless, so we moved it back. It works better the third.
And I think it was also in part because for a period of time, the council went to
Yeah.
two meetings a month.
See, because the council's meeting is normally the first, the first Wednesday, and the commission's the third Thursday, so when we moved it to the fourth, it, the meetings were one week after each, after each other, and if someone appealed, they couldn't get heard the next month by the council, it put them out another month, and it just didn't really work.
Yeah, the third Thursday and the first Wednesday actually work pretty well from a spacing standpoint.
Right, and it's just around the Fourth of July, and I think one other holiday where sometimes Christmas or something, the council moves it to the.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and that's just.
Yeah, okay.
Happens twice a year.
So I'm happy with the status quo.
Any other thoughts?
Yeah, just a few thoughts. I think I have some, we'll ask some questions about the history of the role of the planning commission and the design review committee too, because we're a planning commission, we actually are also doing design review. And I think in other communities, there's a separate design review community, and the planning commissions are really trying to tackle the sort of housing element stuff that we were looking at over the last year. So just curious about the history of that in Fairfax is one question I had for you guys, and, and I don't know, any thoughts about how that's working or not working regarding the size, you know?
Well, I, I think, I think it's working pretty well, and I'll tell you the, the experiences I had with the design review board. So when I first started here, the design review board ruled on the design before a project could go to the planning commission, right? And that didn't always work because they would love the design, and then it would turn out to cause huge amounts of excavation, you know, and planning commission couldn't approve it, right? So then they put it after the planning commission meeting, right? And the planning commission would approve stuff, and they wouldn't like the design. And so it, they switched it back and forth, I think twice, you know, while in the history, I've been here 38 years, right? And I personally think combining it in one group is just better for the applicants. I know it's better for staff because we would get people arguing all the time, why do I have to go to design review if the planning commission might just deny the whole, you know, where the house is located and everything, right? So people were always arguing.
Okay, that makes sense. Yeah, thanks for that, the background on it. Regarding the size of the commission, you know, I'm sort of philosophically in favor of trying to streamline our process for applicants. And it feels like the more commissions, the more points of view certainly, and, and more debate, but also it lengthens the meetings, it lengthens the sort of time to sort of move stuff through the process, and so I'm, I would be okay with going to a five-member commission. I think could be a more streamlined decision-making process. That's just sort of philosophically how I think about it. And then I think in your email, if you, or last, before the last meeting, maybe this topic came up last time, Jeffrey, I think you had also put out there, you know, might we propose some other ways to streamline the process for applicants or, and I think that's worth discussing too, you know, what are some other ways to ensure that good projects are sort of making it through quickly, and those that really need our attention are, get the review that they need, but otherwise we could try to reduce the amount of projects that are coming through here where it's not really necessary for the PC to take a look at it, but maybe it's really more of an appropriate for staff review, so I'm open to those conversations as well. Again, the purpose is let's let good projects who are conforming with the objective design standards that we have created, let them make it through, you know, and, and the stuff that really requires our thinking and, and consideration should come in front of us, but otherwise to try to be more streamlined as a town to make it easier to do stuff, to do good stuff, that is.
Yeah. And the state of California is like pushing us that direction too, yeah, with the ministerial processing requirements, so.
Thank you.
Do you have any kind of specific suggestions about what that would look like, or what, what type of category or project would better qualify for ministerial review, or any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mean, I think anything, I mean, anything in the, in the hillside should probably come to you guys, which, anything that has, involves a lot of grading or has views and a lot of potential neighborhood conflicts should definitely come to the planning commission, but there are like minor things that kind of get caught up in the web of our code, like, you know, like a deck addition to an ADU and things like that, like trees that are exempt coming to the planning commission, that'd be another example. So that would, that came up tonight, so it's like, there's, there's like those little things that don't really impact anything potentially could be reviewed by staff, so.
Okay, well, maybe as like a.
I just, for instance, those trees tonight that you, they were, in the old tree ordinance, they were too small. They never would have required a tree removal permit, but, but they got a committee together to, to revamp the tree ordinance, and they lowered, lowered the circumference down, so that, I mean, these trees are small, the ones for the meeting, the meeting tonight, right?
Yes, so maybe as a follow-up to your comments there, yeah, I agree, I mean, yeah. Just as a follow-up to your comments, Jeff, could you put together a, or and Linda, put together a set of recommendations in terms of?
Yeah, yeah, and I will, I will say that we, we do, since we doped to the housing element, we have, we did a bunch of code updates all at once, we're finding like just little cleanup items that we need to do, so we are planning to come back to the commission and the council. Hopefully by the, by the end of the year, maybe early next year, with kind of a whole, a list of cleanup items, and so that, that could be another thing we could do. Clean up and then streamlining and bring it to the planning commission and the town council.
Cool, yeah, thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I had a couple. On the size of the commission, I am generally, I mean, I think five is fine, seven is fine, and that's not as big a difference on what Commissioner Bella just brought up. I very much agree that, you know, making the process easier for applicants and, and less of a burden is something we should, you know, try and, try and make a conscious effort to do and to improve for making things ministerial where they just go to staff. I think, I, I mean, I personally don't think we, you know, we need to be like a subjective check on every project, but I do think having the planning commission as a step is an important opportunity for people living in the community and neighbors who, without this step of projects coming to the planning commission, it can seem a lot more opaque. I didn't realize that every other neighbor on my block sent a letter in support, and I just have a strange grudge here. And it, and it's, it also, to, to the point Linda mentioned before, when we had the separate design review and planning commission, I think not having the planning commission as an outlet for people to come, the public to come speak means that more people could be going to staff with complaints or issues or questions, and staff is less able to just say, hey, you can come to the meeting and, and talk then. I think, I think we can also serve as an outlet there. One, one, one thing we haven't talked about, and I don't think it needs to be a regular thing, but just wondering if we could be more proactive with checking in on commissioners' schedules and things like that to add in a little bit more liberally than we have before. Special meetings when we're, we know there's going to be a lot going on, I, to me, it just, I always feel bad if somebody's project isn't being heard until 10:30 or 11:00, or if somebody wants to come and talk about the ridge lines or things like that, that they're not waiting till 11:30 because, you know, the project reviews are otherwise of no interest to them. You know, I, I don't know what it's, what it's like for all the other commissioners, obviously, but to me, two meetings that go to 8:30 would be, would be more pleasant generally in a month than one that goes to 10:00 or 10:30. But I know, you know, the more days you add, the, it becomes a lot more difficult coordinating with, you know, potentially 11 people.
And the workload on the staff for having to support two meetings kind of all the time for those types of things. So it's a balance act like
Yeah.
everything else.
Yeah, I wouldn't think it would be two regular scheduled meetings, just a lot, you know, check in and say, hey, this is looking crowded. Can we do a special meeting in April?
Maybe we can do a better job, like if we end up getting, like, we know we can only get through about three applications in a couple hours, so if they start to get up to four and five, maybe we contact the commission and say, can you hold a special meeting so we can have two meetings? And they won't both.
Yeah, we could.
And we can look, we can look into that.
Yeah, or.
A good idea.
You know, if it's three projects and then one policy thing that we know people are going to want to talk about.
Put that on the second meeting, yeah.
Thank you, Vice Pepper. I think that's a good idea. Yes, go ahead.
So I do have a couple of comments. I feel like we're diverging from the operational issue, but I hope that's okay. With regard to the number or time, et cetera, I actually agree with Commissioner Swift about the, the extra voices, I think is valuable. And I don't know how much more time two extra opinions might take over three permits in a night. It could be it more, you know, it could be extra time, but I think it's worth it. So a variety is better, in my opinion, that's why seven is good. With regard to the time, it's, I have to say, over the last couple of years, I've, my life has sort of shifted to make sure that this time is as good as it possibly could be. I, that's very personal, right? And, and I think it should really be dictated by that sequence and rhythm of the other commissions, right? We just, we heard one tonight that there was a conflict, maybe, you know, right? I think that's much more important than maybe my individual schedule is, though I would hate to move anything right now because it would, yeah, it's one of, it's the only time I have, frankly.
And I, and I agree with that because I think, you know, the planning commission is an important body
Yeah.
for a variety of reasons, so that, you know, when we have a schedule and, and we've had this for a long time, and you know, we've got like a full commission now, that, like you said, kind of making the individual commitments to make sure that, you know, the third Thursday or whatever is something I don't schedule other stuff for, you know, unless there's an emergency or whatever that we've blocked out this time, it's part of the routine, so I appreciate that.
And just with regard, because the topic came up, with regard to what projects could be reviewed, I, there are a couple that I have maybe banged the table for, and that's, I feel like it's my opportunity to say it again. So scale, I think, could be one, just benchmark, that, you know, if it's 100 square feet or less and it's not even viewed from the street, absolutely, there's no reason for us to, to see that. Yeah, so that, I think the scale is what's important, and, and then another one, if it's not, if it's not viewable from, from the, the town or community, it's, I think that's.
And it's not in a creek setback.
Yeah, well.
Yeah.
And then another one that I think it's a little bit more complicated, but it's one that I've got some personal experience with, and I think that it's something that we could look into, and that's that hill area residential development permit, and that's, I believe pretty strongly that we shouldn't that, that's an undue burden on the applicant in a lot of cases. I, I was kind of surprised that this, the wood residents didn't come into that category today, which, again, it would have been absurd, where they, she's getting sort of in a way taxed for this long, narrow lot because it goes up the hill, when really we should just be looking at that buildable area, and that's what she, that's what should be evaluated.
Can I argue with you?
Sure.
Can you use a different area of town that has flat in the front and the slope, because Wood Lane, we literally have had three houses wiped out from the slides coming down from those hills, and they've taken, it's a person's own property, and it's wiped out a duplex, and it's wiped out a single-family home where the family just happened to not be home when it slid. So I think, I think there are areas that are, I'm trying to think of one, like, like, but Bothene is not like Wood Lane. So like Bothene doesn't have the same, we can do it, but we have to be careful, like Bothene doesn't have the same landslide hazard risks, you know, and they've got flat areas and then they slope up. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to be responsible for approving something on Wood Lane because it is, I mean, the hills can go at any time.
Okay, but.
Right?
Okay, but if they're not touching it, if they're only, if, if they didn't, you know, on her lot today, 70% of it is up the hill. If she doesn't touch that whole 70%, we shouldn't burden her with that, just because it's, I know it's an opportunity for the descent, the town to make the town better, right? It's, it's about, you know.
Let me just run this by you. So, so it's, that can work, right? As long as you have staff people or a code that includes requirements, like the one house, they, the engineer, because there were active slides, the back wall of the house had to be a debris barrier, and they couldn't have any bedrooms in there. So if you have a staff that's familiar enough with the area that they can ensure that that happens at the building permit stage, then you can go ahead and just approve it at a staff level. My fear is that once the people that have been here a while leave, nobody's going to know that, and, and someone could get hurt, right? If it goes to the planning commission, you usually get neighbors that show up and will speak to the issue, right?
I have to add something here, I can interject myself. I think I, I agree with the sentiment, but there, there, there is an issue here. We cannot request staff to make interpretations, right? You have to comply with what the zoning code, what the law tells you, and there are complexities to it. And so if the, if the existing law doesn't give staff the the power to make an administrative decision, even though it seems silly, then we would still need to run through the commission, because otherwise you're, otherwise you're making, you're doing something that you can't defend.
So what about this, though?
So the, sorry, but so the, and so the objective, if you look at it, I understand the sentiment, it doesn't seem to make sense. Sometimes the zoning code doesn't seem to make any sense. But if a project doesn't comply with how it's written, we would still need to review it, and then our founding can be, well, it doesn't make any sense, so it's fine. But that needs to be established, that our role is by the commission to make sure that that's correct.
Okay, so.
But you could also.
As an example.
Okay, go ahead.
If she was just doing a 50% remodel inside of her house.
I'm sorry, could you please speak through the mic? We're losing the words in the transcript.
If that project that we were looking at today, and I'm just using that project because it had a very distinct 70/30 buildable area, really, on, on the lot, if she was doing a 50% remodel to the inside of her house, she would have to get, you could give me the list, a geotechnical report. She would have to do like all of this whole laundry list of things just because of the configuration of her site.
But, but she, her project didn't fall under the hill area residential, so it's, that's not, I know what you're saying about that, but that wasn't a good example, but let's say you had one of those parcels on Wood Lane, and there's, I think, a tiny little old cabin on one of the parcels that was bought and is probably being remodeled, but let's say you had an, an unimproved parcel there, right? Then you're going to have to go through all of this, even though where the building is or is planned to be would be on the flat part, you still have to, like Linda said, consider the rest of that in the history and and address that. I mean, there are some where maybe the hill area residential overlay may not be needed, but it's in the codes, so maybe the idea is you look at the code and see if there's ways to change that you know, for some projects.
Can I jump in here for a second, you guys? I think we've gotten way off what we've agendized discussion. And I want to make a recommendation on the streamlining of the process and having it ministerial, that the planning department look at the last couple, you know, year or two of planning projects and come up with the type that they would recommend be streamlined. be streamlined, because we certainly have had our share where we've gone, hey, isn't this the kind of one that we could have let you guys decide? And you're like, yeah. So if we could do that and then get back to the original question in terms, I agree with Commissioner Swift and Kelly and all the others, you said the seven, I like the seven. It gives us a little bit more diversity and, you know, allows for people who might not be available for a particular meeting to not, you know, worry that we're not going to be able to make quorum as much. And in terms of the time, I really appreciate it when we get through projects as quickly as we do, because I'm on the East Coast. So I just really like these very efficient meetings, everybody. And but I think, you know, the, the bottom line is, if we get a new commissioner who doesn't, it doesn't work for you on the third Thursday, you know, I think all of us would probably be willing to, to figure something out if it was just not good for any single one of us to meet on a particular date. As it is, this is fine with me. Thanks.
Yes, go ahead.
Can I just ask a, a history question on time? Has it always been seven? I know you have a long history here, but is there?
No, they started at eight, at eight o'clock at one point. And then we had people coming from the city that worked till five and they would not get here on time, right? And that created a big, you know, I'm sorry, we started at seven thirty, right? And they couldn't get here on time, so it went to eight, I mean, it went to seven, right? Am I saying that backwards?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Anyway, we changed it because people were unable to get here on time, right? So I guess it was earlier, it must have started at six, right? Yeah, so they moved it. But at one point, we were meeting at eight o'clock. And I think that was probably everybody lived and worked in town. And so they could get here, you know, there wasn't any kind of problem with. Well, that doesn't make any sense anyway. I know when I first started here, they started at eight, right? And then they started at seven, at seven thirty.
Yeah, it does seem like an important input is, you know, folks' availability after work to get here, right?
And so. Yeah, and then kid, people that had children, you know, wanted to start earlier. People, we had a commission that didn't have any kids. They didn't care if they stayed till twelve thirty at night, you know? So that was probably the people that were willing to meet at eight. But yeah, it's moved around.
It's, and so.
It's never been in the afternoon.
It's never.
Well, I used to work in a place where the meetings were in the afternoon. And so I could work and just leave my desk and go to the meeting and go back to work. And that was my favorite, but that's never gone over here, so.
But and just to ask you another question, I mean, in your experience, have you sort of noticed that those meetings, the ones that started earlier, have sort of lower attendance or any sort of other differences?
Really?
Okay.
Yeah, it's really the issue that whether people show up or not.
Got it.
Yeah, but people do get annoyed when they're here, you know, till eleven or twelve at night. And and you guys start getting kind of, you know, and staff gets kind of goofy, you know? And you're just like eleven o'clock and you're, you're like, you want to go to sleep, right?
Commissioner Kelly.
Yeah, I just wanted to make one more point. With regard to the combination of the Design Review Board and Planning Commission, I do think that there could be a little bit more clarity in even the way the projects are presented with regard to design issues versus planning issues that could make it more clear for both the applicants, the public, and even us, how we address the issues. Having presented to a lot of different boards and having to do it to separate boards, I, I think of them as very distinct areas of review. And I think that it's very muddy the way we do it. And for better or worse, I think it could be better if it was clear.
So how would you do that? Do, I mean, like, I mean, we cite the criteria you're supposed to use to review the design. Staff doesn't have any architects on staff, right? So, I mean, would you somehow separate it out in the, in the staff report as a separate, like, like a separate meeting or something or a separate?
I don't, I don't think that's necessary and it, and it's, it's apparent, right? That we aren't reviewing them, that staff is not reviewing them sort of in, in a separate lens, right? And so it comes to us also indistinct.
Right.
Right?
You could use a different design, like a different font.
No, no, I, I, I understand what he's saying, but I'm not, I'm just not sure how we would. Can you think on it and see if you can come up with something and I'll think on it. I, I think, I think I understand what you're saying. Like, it should be given equal importance to the discretionary permits. And it, and the way we do it, it doesn't really seem to have its, its own. It should have its own importance and it's kind of, I, is that what you're kind of trying to say? Yeah, we don't give it, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I got it.
Commissioner Bella.
We'll work on that.
I just wanted to say, wanted to reinforce me, Commissioner Newton's suggestion about recommendations for streamlining the, you know, based upon your past years of experience. I think that's a great idea, a great follow up from this.
Well, and staff probably already has a list somewhere of some things that they would like.
Oh, yeah, like fences, fences and, you know. But I just, I'm sorry, I have to go back to this one and and remind you guys about our applicant at seventy nine Wood Lane. Because if we just processed him at a staff level, his own engineer said, do not dig a basement. He insisted upon a basement. And I don't even know when there's nothing in the building code that says you can't have a basement. You know what I mean? That would not have been able to, we would not have been able to thwart that. I mean, look where we are with him. It's a mess, right? So I think we have to do it carefully because why? I shouldn't have said the address. Is that what you're saying? Okay.
And I guess. To summarize, sorry. Go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, you know, Fairfax isn't, you know, your kind of normal town or, you know, I mean, it doesn't look like parts of San Rafael, right? Out in the suburbs, I mean, it's, it's unique because of its geography and infrastructure and everything else. So that tends to create some of those things that we're looking at. And that's why we like it.
Yeah, and you, and like some neighborhoods are literally the bottom of a ravine where the, where the soil has washed down. And it's like just fluff, you know? And you have to treat it specially, even the flat parts, because the foundation has to be designed specially. Otherwise, the house cracks or, I mean, you can't just, so it's a difficult, it's a difficult community to try to make certain things just approvable by staff.
So to summarize, it looks like we're okay with Thursdays at seven o'clock and seven people. And I did hear some concerns. I think I want to point out to the commissioners that you need to self-control yourself, so we don't make it lengthy. So you take, you take instead of one fifth, you get one seventh of the time to make your comments. And so I'll be monitoring that. Are there other items we need to talk about here in this agenda item? Okay, so that means.
No, thank you. Suggestions, that's a lot of good information, so. More than I expected, so.
You should know better by now.
Know better.
And there's now seven of us. We move on to item number four, meeting minutes from last meeting. Any comments on the June twenty twenty four meeting minutes, Commissioner Swift?
Page four, my comments at the bottom regarding the dark sky discussion item. I'd like to add two bullets to my discussion. And one would be that I, she provided a timeline of planning commission consideration of the dark sky issue. And then this other one would be Fairfax with its environmental values should lead the county in having a dark sky compliant lighting ordinance.
Any other comments? Can I get a motion?
I'll move. I'll move to approve the minutes of the Fairfax Planning Commission meeting as corrected by Commissioner Swift for June twentieth, twenty twenty four.
Second, please.
Second.
Okay. Newton?
Aye.
Swift? Kelly?
Abstain.
Pedrone?
Abstain.
Bayla?
Aye.
Pfeffer?
Aye.
Chair Jansen?
Aye.
And with that, we move to the planning director's report.
Yeah, I have nothing else to add, although I think maybe this would be a good opportunity to cede the rest of my time to our new planning commissioner, to have him introduce himself. Although he'll have, you know, next up is planning commissioner comments, so we can just roll right into that.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for the opportunity. Well, so my, my name is Daniele Petrone and I'm a six-year resident of Fairfax. But I am a Marin County native. I was born and raised in Mill Valley. I have a lot of experience in planning. I'm technically a planner by trade, though I recently moved into real estate development. And this is kind of my, my effort to get back into planning because I found myself missing it a lot. And I, like I said, I lived here for six years and I love the town. I'm excited to put my skills to to good use and to to give back as I can. And, you know, on a more personal note, I, you know, my partner and I kind of consider ourselves very lucky to have a home here where we can walk to town and access all the goods and services. And so sort of broadening that opportunity to folks who maybe don't have it just quite yet is, is one of my biggest reasons for, for applying to the commission. So I'm very happy to be here and thank you for, for the, the opportunity.
We're very happy that you joined us. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Swift.
Any update on dark sky, speaking of the devil?
Yes, I'm trying to put together a council item. Potentially could make it to the August agenda. If not that, I'll make it to the September. I'm trying to get down to the August agenda, so.
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Bella.
Just a, a reason to try and make that August agenda. I occasionally have to commute to the city at five. And I noticed some of our streetlights are out and dim. So it'd be nice if we could already know that we are going to just be replacing those with the dark sky compliant lighting. And, you know, I, I wouldn't want to get new five or 10-year bulbs that are doing big bright blue light.
Yeah, just maybe this is a topic for a future meeting, but I, you know, reading in the news that San Francisco was one of the first cities in the state that has failed to achieve or meet its requirements from its housing element. And so therefore, the new state law that allows essentially like a builder's remedy type of development formal applications to, that are now legal. And so it seems like that's happening in San Francisco. And just curious if you could give us an update on what the risks are for communities like ours if we don't fulfill our housing element obligations. Maybe this might be a topic for a future meeting, but it's noticed now that the climate is changing around this and that San Francisco is the first of maybe numerous communities that are now not meeting their obligations and therefore being susceptible to a whole new set of, kind of types of development applications.
Yeah, I think that's something we can certainly put on a future agenda.
Any others? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Swift?
Aye, eight fifteen.
Kelly?
Aye.
Pedrone?
Aye.
Bayla?
Aye.
Pfeffer?
Aye.
Newton?
Aye.
Chair Jansen?
Aye. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.